Good evening, everybody. Please take the roll.
Alderman Baccador.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Patack.
Excuse absence tonight?
Reynolds.
I hear.
Laveri.
Present.
Jepson.
Present.
Herndon.
Present.
Crane.
Think Alderman Crane will be joining us shortly here.
Okay.
Once you vote.
Yep.
Second. Motion Shemalman Laveri, Shemalman Jepson to allow Alderman Crane to join us remotely, please take the roll.
Alderman Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Patack. I'm sorry, Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Present.
Thank you.
Alderman Crane, you still with us?
Jordan?
We should take roll call one more time.
We'll take roll again, sir, with you on it this time, okay?
Okay, Alderman Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri. Jepson.
Present.
Present.
Herndon.
Present.
And Crane. Thank you.
I'd like to open the meeting tonight with a public comment. Again, this is going to be your time for me to let you speak and give any ideas, thoughts, concerns, statements. A lot of times we have a chance to potentially answer some of those questions. There are some questions throughout the course of the meeting. Anybody like to go up and public comment tonight?
Will you warn me when I have like ten seconds? You ready, Ren? Wait. John? Well, boys, I'd like to start by asking a question. At the Rotary Park Playground, why is the wood between the fence and the paver wall already deteriorating? We don't need little Jeffy getting a hunk of wood stuck in his leg, neck, or eye. Do you re- did you really spend thousands of dollars to fix that dangerous park only to skimp out and use untreated, unsealed wood? Please correct me if my observations are wrong, but why else is the deck bowing so drastically after being installed just months ago? It's in numerous areas. Take a look at the wood that holds up the sun shades. The issues are easily noticeable. Either y'all got ripped off or someone allowed this project to be half-assed at the expense of the taxpayers and children. Recently, I researched the Lividup LaSalle website. Overall, I was impressed until I hit the stay section. This led me to the only one location, an Airbnb twenty miles away in Ottawa, despite having plenty of hotels and Airbnbs within five miles of LaSalle. But wait, there's more. To stay in this Airbnb on two non-holiday weeknights after fees, the total would be one thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. So who here is getting a cut from that? Once I called this out, it was removed from the website. Now there is nothing in the stay section. Joe Jepson, I'll have to be quick because I might get tackled if I go over my three minutes. You made it clear that you could give a damn less about air quality if it only affects sensitive groups. Are you aware that we have children in this area who have serious conditions that doctors believe have been triggered by the environment such as tainted water, soil, and air? Do you, did, uh, do you know that the drugs used to help these kids have awful side effects? You know, making them even more sensitive? So if you don't give a damn about the children, the old men living alone, whose well-being do you care about? When you were voted in, I'm sure the sensitive groups thought you wouldn't only stand up when the healthy and active were impacted. Let's all wait until the nurses can't breathe before we worry about the air quality. That's all I took from your statement. I do have some positives to touch on. X Church did an amazing job holding the crafts event for the kids during Miracle on First Street this Saturday. Christmas at the Movies during Sunday services was also a great time. That continues for two more weekends. I saw some familiar faces at the Christmas family bingo. After that event, elderly women who attended requested that it bring up that seniors would benefit from weekly bingo or something engaging put on by the city that isn't gambling machines designed to take their hard-earned money away. Any remaining time will be used as a moment of reflection.
Thanks, John.
Anybody other want, anybody else want to do public comment tonight? Any other public comment tonight? Let's move to approval minutes.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the minutes. City Council meeting held on November twenty-fifth. Place on file, each Alderman has a copy.
Motion Shemalman Reynolds, Shemalman Thompson to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Discussion and potential action of the following petitions and our presentations.
Request from Ameren, Illinois to break ground at three forty-three Civic Road to set a new call.
Your Honor, I move to grant the request from Ameren to break ground at three four three Civic Road.
Second.
Motion Shemalman Jepson, Shemalman Laveri, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Request for two thousand twenty-five raffle license from Keith Bojo Memorial Benefit and Related Matters.
I move that we grant the raffle license.
Second.
Motion Shemalman Laveri, Shemalman Thompson, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Presentation by and on behalf of Utica Solar LLC regarding proposed commercial solar energy facility on portion of premises having LaSalle County PIN nineteen dash zero five dash four zero one dash zero zero zero, not presently part of any municipality in LaSalle County, and also generally located east of the premises, commonly known as Operating Engineers Local Number One Fifty Premises and Related Matters.
You have to get Solar LLC addressed to council.
Second.
Motion Shemalman Laveri, Shemalman Reynolds, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Good evening, sir. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Appreciate you giving us an opportunity to provide a presentation here. My name is Seth Upoff. I'm an attorney from Peoria. Actually grew up just down the road of Flanagan, so not all that far from here. And I'm here with Matt Kwitkowski from Nexamp, and he's going to be giving the bulk of the presentation. But I just wanted to start off by introducing myself, and then I'll introduce Matt. So Nexamp has this project that's planned. There was a brief description of where it's located. Matt will go through some of the details about his company and about the site location, talk to you about that, provide some of the information in relation to this project, and then we'll have an opportunity, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer any of those as they go along. So with that, Matt.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Matt Kwitkowski, and I'm with Nexamp, who's the parent company to Utica Solar LLC. We are proposing a five-megawatt community solar facility in LaSalle County, right adjacent to the city of LaSalle. Next slide. I just wanted to give you guys a little background about our company, and then kind of go through the more specifics about community solar and then this project specifically. Our company was founded in two thousand seven by two Army veterans. And when they came back from being deployed overseas, they realized a lot of the conflict was about energy resources, so they came back and wanted to do something about it. Fast forward to today, we have over four hundred and seventy-five employees, and we are the largest community solar company in the country. And we just completed a large module contract with a local, domestic supplier. Because not only will that ensure that we're getting the modules domestically, but we're also quick to get to construction instead of, you know, with the supply chain issues and things like that. Next slide. Specific to Illinois, we started to build out our Midwest team in two thousand eighteen. We have eighty-plus employees here in the state of Illinois now. And this past fall, we, our company announced our second headquarters with Chicago. We are currently building or operating thirty-plus projects statewide with twenty-four plus more in development. And our operation assets serve over five thousand residences and small businesses in Illinois. Next slide, please. Just to give you guys a little background, if you're not familiar with community solar, what is community solar? At the, at the large level, you have your generation facilities. You've got coal and gas plants, utility-scale solar and utility-scale wind. Those are the solar farms that are hundreds of acres. And they get put on the transmission line, and often the energy goes pretty far. With community solar, it stays on the local grid. It's tied into just those three-phase lines that run along the roads. And what that does is it allows your grid to be more resilient because you have production on the grid. And like I said, the energy stays local, so it doesn't go, it doesn't get transmitted to other areas. Next slide. And then in terms of a subscription-based program, what is community solar? Sometimes referred to as shared solar. You know, there's obviously the option to put solar panels on your roof, or if you have the space for it, you can put them on ground mounted on your property, but a lot of people don't want to do that. So this is a way to kind of subscribe. You can subscribe to one of these and, you know, with other, other local residents. And you get an opportunity to save on your electric bill, which is a fifteen percent discount. Credits are applied to your normal utility bill, and it allows for businesses and residential customers alike to subscribe, to be a part of it, save some money without having it on their property or roof. Next slide, please. Just to go through some of the typical components of us, of us, one of our solar facilities, we have an equipment pad that houses the transformers and the inverters, which I'll show you the proposed locations for those. In Illinois, we use pollinators and native grasses for basically two reasons. One, it helps with habitat, wildlife habitat, and number two, it helps with infiltration of stormwater and runoff. And then we have the PV modules and farm fence. We're open to fence suggestions. We typically like the farm fence, the wood post fence with welded wire mesh. And what that does is it blends better into the character, you know, in agrarian, the agrarian landscape. It's not as, I guess, obtrusive as a chain link fence. And then we have the posts and racking. Typically, our panels are about ten to twelve feet high at full tilt, so when they're full, they track the sun during the day. So when they're at that, are at that full sixty-degree angle, they're ten to twelve feet high. Next slide, please. Here's the overview of kind of the area, right off US six, just east of the Union Hall there. And yeah, it's a whole parcel there I'm highlighting, and you'll see later which, where our solar facility actually is proposed. Next slide, please. Here's a good depiction of the parcel. The highlighted area is essentially where the fence would be. It's along, as I said, it's along US Route Six in Utica. It's Zone A one. The parcel's nineteen oh five four zero one zero zero zero. The parcel size is approximately seventy-seven acres, and then inside the fence is twenty-nine acres. The project capacity is five megawatts, and the project life is thirty to forty years. Next slide, please. Just to go over some benefits, once the solar farm becomes operational, it gets a separate PIN for basically our lease area, and it's taxed based on the megawatts produced. So this just kind of models out your two, or currently the two taxing bodies with the highest tax rate based on the property card. This is based on twenty-nine acres. So projected taxes just for year one, the current taxes are roughly two thousand dollars. Six hundred and eighty-four goes to Waltham Elementary, and then the five-ten goes to LaSalle Peru High School. With the solar taxes, the aggregate would be approximately thirty-one thousand, with eleven thousand going to the elementary school and eighty-two hundred going to LaSalle Peru High School. So that's a difference of fifteen times in the first year. And what's unique about these is that it adds to the tax base without creating demand for public services such as parks, roads, schools. They're very quiet once operational. It will provide a utility savings for over six hundred subscribers, and typically when we open subscriptions for the solar facility, we keep it closed just to local areas for a period of time, and if that doesn't fill up, then we outreach to other people in the Ameren, Ameren Territory. But typically, we keep the subscription closed for local people to subscribe to save on the utility bills. And then I also modeled the projected taxes or had the projected taxes modeled as well over forty years. There's obviously depreciation with the solar farm, but over the forty years, there's still a five-times difference in taxes from a, from an aggregate standpoint, and then all the, all the taxing bodies as well. Next slide. Due diligence is just, let's go through all the due diligence we've done. We've done alt surveys and topography. Studied, studied, we have to go through a study with the utility, which is Ameren, to ensure that their grid can support this project. We've completed that. We've done a state historic preservation office consultation to make sure there's no historic resources in the project area. We've done threatened and endangered species consultations, wetland delineations. We consulted with the FAA to make sure there's no issues with glare. We've done an NRI with LaSalle County. And then we've executed an agriculture impact mitigation agreement with the State Department of Agriculture. And that's just an agreement we have to enter into with the state. It says basically during construction, operation, and decommissioning that we protect and preserve the farm ground, you know, in terms of topsoil, drainage tiles, et cetera. And then we've done a drain tile study as well. Next slide. And then I'm going to quickly go through the site plan here. As you can see, the whole parcel's shown there. We are in the back of the parcel, access off of US six via gravel drive. The setbacks currently meet or exceed the ordinance requirements in the state sighting bill. The internal wiring will be all underground except for towards the road, there'll be a series of poles next to the pole that we're connecting to along US six. And then panel, panels and equipment will not exceed twelve feet in height. Next slide, please. The inverter, this shows you kind of more specifically the southern portion where we're proposing the solar facility. The inverter and equipment pad will be centrally located away from property lines. We like to put that kind of in the middle of site, both for visual reasons and then also for, there's just a small hum, so you don't want those to be next to the property line or what have you. Setbacks to the panels on the west side, fifty-seven feet, east side seventy-two, south side, we're two hundred and thirty-five from the residences and one hundred and seventy-five to the property line. And, and then as you can see up here, you see some kind of like circles, kind of amoeba shapes. Those are the wetlands that were delineated. So we're staying away from the wetlands. We're trying to preserve those. And then no lighting is proposed on these, so there's no lighting at night or anything. Next slide, please. The landscape plan, like I said, the site will be planted with pollinator species, which will be like native grasses and wild, wildflowers. Mixes will help reduce the storm runoff and increase the infiltration. Proposed greening along the tire south side, a double row of evergreen trees. And the array will be surrounded by an eight-foot-high fixed knot wire mesh fence with wood posts. Next slide, please. And then this is, I'm sure you guys are familiar with this, but this is just pictures along US Route Six, and you see the tree line way in the back. It'd be really, really hard to see along Route Six, it's twelve hundred-plus feet back there. So that just gives you kind of how long that parcel is. We'd be way back there. Next slide, and then this is another shot of kind of similar, but taken a little further west. Next slide, please. And that, that's it. So, yeah.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Yeah.
So what is the whole parcel? Seventy-two acres, you say?
Seventy, seventy-seven.
Okay, are you guys leasing the whole thing?
No, we're just leasing that. A little over twenty-nine because we have a buffer area. We'll basically lease all the way from our fence to the property line. And then if you went back in the slides, there's a linear wetland, so everything's south of that linear wetland.
Do you have an agreement with the, say, with the owner of property to expand?
Not currently.
Okay.
No. I, I'm not going to speak for the owner, but I know that they want to preserve the frontage along US six, potentially.
Sure, sure. And can you tell us one other location you have nearby us, like?
Yeah, we've got quite a few in construction. We've got some up in Rockford. We've got some, most of them in West Chicago. Closest one I want to say right now that's under operation would be Will County. We've got a few being built in Livingston County. I could get back to you with the closest one.
I just noticed a new one. I, when I went to Peoria north of eighty-nine, there's one down there, just north of Len Amaro. So I didn't know, it was weird. I never saw it before, so. But I know, I'm sure there's different developers.
That might be ours, but we buy projects as well, so it might be one that we recently bought. And that's what is a little more unique about Nexamp. A lot of developers do sell these, you know, once they go get their entitlements or they'll sell it anytime during the develop, after a lease or after construction. We own and operate these facilities.
You mentioned that after forty years or decommissioned, do you guys responsible for, is that written that you guys have removed those panels?
Yes, we haven't yet, but there is a bond, the agriculture impact mitigation agreement we have with the State Department of Agriculture. They require us to put up a bond.
Okay.
With the, with the county or whoever, the city, wherever we are. And, and basically that bond's usually set, you know, based on our estimate at the time, and there's escalators, you know, throughout the lifetime so that they ensure if anything happened to our company that they would have the funds to decommission it.
So this is for residential use?
Yes, it's for businesses too, but, but it's for homeowners that are currently paying Ameren.
Is it part of the state subsidy program for solar?
This is not. No, this is, this one would not be.
So how do you, how do you make money off it then?
It's basically the subscriptions, yeah. But, but there's another program called the Adjustable Block Program. That's the, the state subsidy program, but this project.
Where were you attached to the grid? Do you have to go to the substation at six in East Ninth Road?
Yeah, we attach to the grid. There's a lot of complexities, but where, where you attach, you can only have so many projects because the substation can only handle so much. So generally, you know, once you have three or four of these small projects, you got to upgrade the substation, which comes at a very big cost.
So is it fair to say you sell this to Ameren, and Ameren gives a rebate back to the customer?
Exactly. They, they basically put credits on the customer's bill.
And then any storage fields planned?
Not for this one.
Not for this one, but it's, it is on your radar to have storage facility for the power without going directly into the grid nonstop when it's utilizing or?
Oh, yeah, we have been doing that. Right now, it's, it's not really penciling, I guess you'd say, for a financial standpoint. But the goal is to get there. There are a few test cases. You know, if we did add storage in the future, we'd obviously have to go through that approval process, but I foresee storage, you know, being a big part of it because, like you said, the peak demand is when people get home from work, when there's no sun, or early in the morning. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, how does the subscriptions work? It's like, what kind of fees associated with that?
Yeah, there's no fee to sign up, no fee to cancel. Generally, when we, we have a whole team, our asset management team, customer acquisition, that when a facility comes up in an area, they'll basically, you know, send out postcards, mailers, and stuff like that. And it's free to sign up, no cost, no cost. You just, basically, it's like, the easiest thing to describe is like you're buying a hundred-dollar gift card for eighty-five dollars, you know? It's, and once you're signed up, you're paying us eighty-five dollars for a hundred-dollar credit, if that makes sense. So you get the credit from, from Ameren, and we have a program with Ameren that allows for that, the state does.
So is that like a first-come, first-served type thing?
Yes, yes.
And it would be to the LaSalle residents exclusively at the beginning?
Yes, people in the immediate area, whether it be Utica, LaSalle. We generally keep it open for a certain amount of time, just make sure that everyone gets a chance to sign up, benefit the local community. But then if there's, comes a point where there's not enough subscriptions, then they'll open their.
Yeah, that was, I was going to ask that next, if, what if you don't get the number of subscriptions?
Then anyone in Ameren can technically, technically subscribe, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sir, I have, just to be clear, I think it was brought out, so this is on southern, roughly the southern twenty-nine acres of the parcel?
Yes.
Not on the roughly thirty or forty acres to the north then?
That's, that's correct.
I saw one of, one of the ones, I just wanted, I think that was brought up by one question, maybe it was by the mayor. And I just want to be clear on that. And in regard to this, in regard to the modules, you're also planning on a fence about eight-foot-high in these modules? When they're, when they're planed out, they go as high as what, twelve feet?
Twelve feet, and, and that's only like, you know, early morning. They basically track the sun during the day. In early morning, they'll be facing east at sixty degrees, so that's when they're like twelve feet. And when the sun sets, they'll be at sixty degrees facing west.
All right, so what would they be when, aside from at their highest point, when they're, what would they generally be at?
The average is seven to eight feet.
So average is seven to eight, and the fence would be your present proposals for eight foot, correct?
Yes.
And obviously, in regard to safety and health, et cetera, in regard to the equipment, the modules, things of that nature, have there been studies done as to whether or not these are safe, whether they adversely affect the environment? Could you comment on that?
Yes, there has been a lot of studies on that, and there's a common study out of the North Carolina State University that basically, they're tempered glass, so when hail occurs and stuff like that, they just don't shatter, they just kind of spider web. And then the materials that make up the panels aren't toxic themselves. That's a miss, a lot of misconception out there about toxicity in panels. But they've done studies with the North Carolina State where they smashed them up, sprayed acid wash on them, and there was no residual effect from, from any chemical leakage or anything because there's no harmful chemicals. It's just really aluminum, silicone, and glass, mostly glass.
And then in regard to the parcel, at present, you've moved to Utica, you've said LaSalle. Present, it's in an unincorporated area, it's not part of any municipality, correct?
That's correct.
But it is adjacent to LaSalle and Utica?
Yes.
And presently, is it correct that there is a petition that you've got pending with the LaSalle County? And there will be, is there personally scheduled hearing on that for any members of the public who might wish to attend on the eighteenth of December?
Yes, there's, it's the eighteenth, right. Eighteenth of December at six thirty.
At five o'clock?
At five.
They can.
I can't comment on the time.
Public can check on that.
Yeah, it's next Wednesday.
On December for their information. I have one more question. So you said a thirty, forty-year lifespan?
Yes.
Who would be responsible for maintenance over that time if something breaks?
Uh, we would.
Okay.
These sites are, we have an operations center that's twenty-four, seven, because we have so many operational assets across the country. We have a camera, and then we also, there's a lot of like alarms and sensors and things like that. So they're, they're always monitored. If something, if we're getting nick, like weird numbers from one string of racks, we've got the, a lot of employees within Illinois that's able to come out for them, you know, the same day to see what's going on. So you not only have like routine, routine maintenance, you know, and just folks checking on everything, doing inspections, but you also have the twenty-four-hour monitoring of our operations center.
What about disposal and things of the modules and the things like that?
Yeah, we, we currently, we haven't decommissioned one, like one of our own farms, but currently during construction, obviously, there's some breakage or might be panels bent. We aggregate that, them in a warehouse inside of Chicago. And then there's a company in Wisconsin that we send it to for recycling. And, and there's more and more companies that are starting to do that, obviously, with the, with the, with the, with the spike and all the solar and so there's a lot more companies probably in the future that'll be doing that as well.
Not putting you in a sweat, you might not know this, but like when there's snow on it or like the crops, you know, are uprooting, you get all the dust from farming, does that affect anything at all?
Yeah, it can affect production, and then, and then if it's real, but usually just normal rain takes care of it. But if it's really bad, like for whatever reason, there's people that clean the panels. But generally, we don't have to do that.
Appreciate your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
You're more than welcome to stay the rest of the evening, but there's nothing we're acting on, so enjoy the night if you want to leave, you know? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Appreciate you having attention this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports to the officers.
You're either I move, we accept. Building inspectors' report is read second.
Motion, Mom and Ambassador, Sir Mom and Thompson, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Good bless you.
Thank you.
Monthly police income report for November two thousand twenty-four showing total fees collected of twelve thousand fourteen dollars.
Motion is placed on file in November twenty-four.
Second. Motion, Mom and Laveri, Sir Mom and Reynolds, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Communications, bids, appointments and resignations, standing committees.
Discussion potential action regarding the recommendation of the Finance Committee regarding a request for monetary donation from the Illinois Valley Food Pantry and related matters.
We uh postponed this for two weeks, the decision.
Thank you, Alderman.
Discussion potential action regarding the recommendation of the Streets, Alley's and Traffic Committee regarding a request for a street light on Sterling Street, just north of Eleventh Street and related matters.
Uh we put this on the table for, oh, two weeks till we can hear from Ameren and see if it's feasible to put a light up there.
Thank you, Chairman. Special committees. Old Business.
Authorization of pay request number twenty-two for Vissering Construction Company totaling thirty-six thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. For work completed to date on aerobic digester conversion project and related matters.
Your Honor, I make a recommendation that we uh authorize payment uh request number twenty-two for Vissering Construction is read.
Second.
Motion, Mom and Reynolds, Sir Mom and Thompson, please take the roll.
Alderman Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Alderman Crane. Authorization of pay request number nine for Autobomb Company Inc. totaling three thousand three hundred eight dollars and sixty-two cents. For work completed to date on masonry restoration project and related matters.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the uh uh pay request number nine for Autobomb Company is read.
Second.
Motion, Mom and Reynolds, Sir Mom and Ambassador, take the roll, please.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Baccador.
Any old business, gentlemen? It's just wanna ki- kind of uh reflect on the weekend. On Saturday, we had our miracle on First Street and just uh the nice weather warmed up. It was just a perfect day out there for for the events, so I want to appreciate uh again, ex church, uh the LPAC Committee and uh Mike Bird, let's use the uh. The lobby of the Autobomb Ballroom for Breakfast with Santa and the Santa Claus visit. Uh just a great uh in the fire truck, Jerry, Chief Jerry, thanks for the fire department, the smores and the fire truck rides. So it was a perfect day for it, so thanks to everybody who was involved in that.
And your honor, uh might I bring up the fact that I requested that something be placed on the agenda to talk about uh two pieces of uh. Two buildings in a property and I I've asked that to be removed and put back on in two weeks. Um so more discussion can be had before we present it.
So it should be on the twenty-third?
It's, it'll be on the next agenda, Alderman.
Thank you.
Brett, you're good with these two things, if you put that on the general agenda on the finance and traffic?
Yeah, yeah, we discussed that.
You extended the leaf back another week?
Yeah, uh with the cold weather last week and obviously that crazy windstorm on Wednesday. Uh I had some people reach out, I think you guys are two, to see we extend the weathers or the leaf back for one more week, especially with nice weather today and tomorrow. So um we're do that. And what's gonna go on, just so you know, is uh basically John RBC, our foreman, is to be driving around, basically noticing where it is. And then Thursday and Friday, the back will actually be out, so don't don't worry if you don't see it yet, it'll be out probably Thursday and Friday. Because he doesn't need it to run, you know, all day this whole week. So.
How long have the yard waste still?
And the yard waste will stay up until Friday as well. Good question. Thanks for bringing up. New business.
Acceptance of two thousand twenty-five schedule of regular meetings of the LaSalle City Council and its committees.
Two things about this one. First of all, uh we did identify an error. Thank you, Ginny. Uh in January, instead of January twenty-second, that should be January twentieth. That would be consistent and is a Monday, so.
I was gonna ask about that.
Yeah, thank you for catching that. We appreciate it. Uh secondly, is that Alderman Laveri did ask me. Um where the Streets, Alley's and Traffic Committee is on this uh sheet. Historically, we've not put it on the sheet. It's always been, I think, brought in under other committee meetings, subheading, but should we want it on there, as it has become a more consistent committee, I could certainly add it. Um there's no reason we can't add it. So we can always approve this based on those changes. Um and I'll have it added on the the final copy that goes online.
I move that we approve the twenty-twenty-five calendar based on those two additions.
Second.
Motion, Mom and Laveri, Sir Mom and Reynolds, take the roll, please.
Alderman Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane. Alderman Crane.
George, you still there?
Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Any other new business? We all got some stuff going on up here. Film this. Any other new business, gentlemen? Okay. Discussion potential action, Jordan, any new business, sir? Okay. Discussion potential action on the following additional ordinance resolutions.
A resolution abating principal and interest on six hundred ninety-five thousand dollar taxable gener- general obligation bonds. Series two thousand ten Recovery Zone Economic Development Bonds of the City LaSalle, LaSalle County, Illinois for the tax year two thousand twenty-four.
I move that we, we approve the resolution abating principal and interest on six hundred ninety-five thousand taxable general obligation bonds. Series twenty-ten Recovery Zone Economic Development Bonds, LaSalle, LaSalle County for twenty-twenty-four.
Second. Motion, Mom and Laveri, Sir Mom and Herndon, please take the roll.
Alderman Laveri.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Or.
Did he, did Jordan fold?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I just wanted to indicate from a legal standpoint, unless John wants to say it from each year the city does this abatement. If the city did not do this resolution in furtherance of an informal commitment made to the constituents years ago. This bond issue money would go on the tax rolls. This end, it, this resolution assures that it will not, because it's been abated by the city.
I'd like to say when we first got out of council, what were there about nine bonds we were abating, John? Yeah, there's now there's one. This is our last bond. I know we do have some debt out there with the I E P A and some loan and forgiveness and with the uh the wastewater treatment plant. But this is where this is down to our last bond and we do abate this one.
We'd have water for the person who was announcing those. Took like twenty-five minutes. Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the City LaSalle, LaSalle County, Illinois to borrow funds from the Public Water Supply Loan Program and related matters.
I'd be, I'd like to say something before I make the motion here. I think the new well is gonna cost about nine million. We can get a loan, where half of it's gonna be forgiven at low interest. So this is a, this is a great deal and we can't do without water, so. I make the, I make the motion to approve the ordinance authorized the City of LaSalle, LaSalle County, Illinois to borrow funds for the Public Water Supply Loan Program and related matters.
Second.
Motion, Mom and Laveri, Sir Mom and Thompson, please take the roll.
Alderman Jefferson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane. Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance le- levying for corporate purposes for the City of LaSalle, LaSalle County, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty-four and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five and related matters.
You want to say anything first, John, or? Yeah, a cou- couple of quick comments on this. I think um you guys got this in your packets maybe a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if you, I missed the last meeting, so I wasn't sure if you discussed it at finance or not. But uh pretty cut and dry, pretty standard with previous years. Um the uh you'll see uh very modest increases um in what. Uh we're levying for um the police and fire pension continues to be um about two-point-two million of the three-point-four million that we levy for. Um we slowly are getting our arms around um those pensions. Um the fire pension was very close to ninety percent at one point funded. Uh we had, we actually dropped the levy on that last year um from levying close to two hundred thousand and we're putting that money into the police pension. Uh police pension is the big one of two-point-one million on the levy. Um that funding percent has been creeping up uh slowly for us. Um as we continue to make progress and be on path to be um ninety to one hundred percent funded by twenty-forty, so. This is basically um, you know, I I think a a pretty good indication of of where we are. Um with not having any uh bonds that we're levying for and and um where our money uh from tax revenue is being spent.
So the levy's four-point-three percent is the increase?
Four-point-three-six.
I, I, I move that we approve the ordinance for for the levy for May first, twenty-twenty-four to April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five and related matters.
Second.
Motion, Mom and Laveri, Sir Mom and, was it Thompson? Please take the roll.
Alderman Herndon.
Aye.
Crane. Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
An ordinance approving modification of agreement in regard to union contract between the City LaSalle and LaSalle Professional Firefighters Local forty-seven sixty and related matters.
Your Honor, I make the motion that we approve the ordinance, approve uh modify, modification of the agreement. In regard to union contract between the City of LaSalle, LaSalle Professional Firefighters Lo- uh Local forty-seven sixty and related matters. Each Alderman has a copy.
Second.
Motion, Mom and Reynolds, Sir Mom and Thompson, please take the roll.
Alderman Baccador.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Couple, couple of comments on this. I know uh Chief Janik and I would like to to make aware is that the base, the the basic um. Uh purpose of this is to add paramedics and a paramedic personnel to the contract with a wage rate. So that we can potentially um have those in-house at some point. Our our current um contract with the local was to just have the our firefighter engineers be um EMT basics. And this would get us to the paramedic level, so increasing the uh the education requirements um for the the responders that we have. And and hopefully increase the uh the quality of care that we're giving to patients uh in the City of LaSalle. Chief Janik, anything that I missed?
I just want to say that uh John and I started this journey back in February, starting, we identified some needs for the fire department. And uh emergency medical per uh services portion of it. Um this is gonna address some, hopefully address some staffing issues. I mean, uh the council approved changing our contract for the paramedic services back in September, August, September. You know, that came along after we started this journey, so there's been a lot of issues that arose since then. And we hope that going forward, we can kind of grow our own personnel and provide. A level of service that's uh probably hasn't been seen in a while here, forever, maybe.
Chief Jerry, IVCC o- offers the courses for certification, right?
Pardon me?
IVCC offers the courses for paramedic?
Yes, that, that's correct. They offer paramedic program.
And I just want to follow up that uh I really appreciate Hunter and the rest of the the team already on staff. Uh they they made some adjustments to their schedules to uh to make this happen, gives them opportunity also to to go back and get that training. Paramedic thing, it's not something you can just go for like eight weeks and get it. You're talking it's uh almost like two years it takes to get that. Um but we we couldn't be here today talking about this if the the current fire department personnel weren't on board, so thank you guys for for uh being. Uh the team were flexibility discussions that happened over the last couple of months was amazing, so.
I met.
Not surprising, but amazing.
I met a young man over the weekend. He was uh shadowing the respiratory therapist at St. Elizabeth's in Ottawa. And he was becoming a paramedic and Ottawa firefighter.
Cool.
Yeah, and he's already a EMT.
I want to go back real quick to the one we uh the the city uh corporate um purpose uh levying for the corporate taxes. Um one thing I recognize is that again, you know, when you get your property tax bill, there's only, you know, LaSalle's just one portion. You have all the schools, you have the county, uh there's other things on there that um that unfortunately, we we don't have control of, so I'm very proud of this group. Gentlemen and our staff and and uh everybody here and uh you know, our employees doing a good job to try to toe the line, keep that tax down as much as we can. Uh one thing I do want to say is, you know, we don't have a separate line for our library. We don't have a separate line for our fire protection district. So all that stuff is in in our, basically our our LaSalle tax portion, tax bills. Because you can maybe look at other communities and say, well, we'll do their portion, but then you get a different line for the library tax. You get another line for the fire protection, so I just want to make sure everybody's kind of aware of that, but uh again, I appreciate it. Thank you. Let's just keep going. Definitely making some good strides here. Um and I think we've done a good job of still providing a lot of services and stuff for the community. Um while we're still doing a good job of being fiscally responsible, so.
I think I've seen notices in local paper for all three school districts uh.
Yeah.
Increasing their levies, and I think they all have their public hearings because of the.
Yeah.
Percent of increase.
No need for a second session tonight? Approval bills?
Total submitted seven hundred thirty, seven hundred thirty-seven thousand seventy-three dollars and twenty cents.
I move that we pay the bills each year. Alderman has a copy?
Second.
Motion, Mom and Laveri, Sir Mom and Reynolds, please take the roll. I'm sorry, we don't need to take the roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I'm sorry, we didn't need to roll the bills. I'm sorry. I'm I'm thinking of, wait for Jordan Crane, why you say, motion for adjournment?
Um Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane. Baccador.
Now we'll take a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion by, sorry, Alderman Crane. Motion, Mom and uh Thompson, Sir Mom and Reynolds, all in favor?
Aye.
Again.